Thirty. All right, it's five thirty. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Feis.
Here.
All right.
And Mr. Greider is also here.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Greider.
Yeah, he has an important piece of this meeting. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, the pledge this evening will be led by War Two Council member Jonathan Greider.
You'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular session as proposed, and the minutes of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three work session as proposed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as well as the the addition of one A one bills payment for January twenty-third in the amount of one million seven hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents, and Monday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of three million five hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Feis.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number two on this agenda is a discussion of the FY twenty-four budget, just an update and timeframe. So, Ms. Wood, would you please take over?
All right, good evening. So, just want to give you guys kind of a update on where we are in the process and a few small changes that have happened with the tentative timeline that I presented last time. So, for our budget process, we just reviewed some stuff with Noel this morning in regards to the CIP to try and get that to that six million mark. And then we've got the base budget calculated after, and then we've received the department and staff requests and other council member requests. And then we've also been working with each department to try and figure out if they, if there's any revenues that they can increase or expenses they can decrease for fiscal twenty-four. And then we've been, we're still working on calculating the levy rates. Some of that's kind of up in the air right now until legislation figures out what they're doing with the multi-residential property class, as well as some of the other House files and Senate files that have been proposed. And then the other part that we are, that is also kind of factoring into our levy rates is the EMA levy, and if that gets created or not at the county level. There was a joint meeting last Thursday that had some discussion with the Board of Supervisors and the EMA Commission. As of right now, no decision's been made to move that to the county level, but they have another meeting, is it this Thursday? And at two to see if they can get that finalized. So that'll have an effect on our general fund. If it is not created, we'll have to keep that in our general fund, and if it is, we can move that out. And then the tentative timeline, the change here, we're still planning on February sixth for setting the date for the hearing on the twentieth for the max levy rate. The only change is moving the date for the bond hearings to setting the date on the twentieth for hearing on the sixth, and it'll have to be done before we approve our final budget. Then everything else is the same. And that's all I have for an update.
I guess, so, still working, taking a look at large items that may, may or may not impact what we're actually able to put in our general fund. As I mentioned, there's been subcommittee hearings on the state level to take a look at the multi-residence. I think they originally had put it in for cities, wasn't it in November or so, or whenever, for cities to calculate fifty-six percent of multi-
Yeah, so the fifty-six percent included, that was for the residential level, that included that multi-residential in those valuations. And they're finding that that was actually an error, and it should have been lower than that. But we're waiting to see what their final decision is, if it's going to be for fiscal twenty-four that they're going to enforce that, or if we can somehow get it pushed out to twenty-five.
And what that means is the amount of money that we're able to levy on residential property. So, it was up to fifty-six percent of the worth of a property, and now, after we've calculated that, put that into what we're going to do for a budget to kind of figure out how much money we have, they turned around and said they made a mistake on the state level, and that instead of fifty-six, it will be around fifty-four percent. And so, right now, cities across the entire state of Iowa, not just Waterloo, are pretty much scrambling because I think from a statistic, what was it, over sixty-plus percent have at least set their maximum levies or began the process for setting a budget, which means that people would have to go back into their budget and make those adjustments, and it will decrease the overall funding that cities were sure they were able to have this year. And the challenge is, you know, our budgets are, our general fund budgets are pretty much almost all staff, staffing. So, cities across the state will have to make decisions on how they're going to be able to handle those, that change in revenue, and so it's really put people in a very tight spot right now. So, we have been trying to work, the Iowa League of Cities, the Metro Coalition, have been trying to work with our state legislators to see how we can work through this challenge, because it's going to have a heavy impact, anywhere from maybe in this area, almost a half a million dollars, to other areas that will see multimillion-dollar impacts to their budgets. And it has been a very challenging time right now, seeing all the changes and how they're going to impact our cities. The second one is, we've had a conversation on the county level to take a look at how we're handling consolidated dispatch and our emergency management commission has met and asked that that would be a county levy, which means that all residents across the state will pay, pay a flat rate. Right now, it's divided up by cities, and we've been talking about this for, what, six, seven years? They, eight, chief, trying to make sure that it's across the board and fair for everyone. So, not necessarily because of tax implications, but because having everyone to be able to pay into that system across the entire county. And it's also some, from the study that was done with Delta Work shows some potential gaps, so we want to make sure that all of our citizens across the entire county are, have equal access, that we have a good staff, because nine-one-one is one of those numbers that you want to have. You may not ever want to have to use it, or you may not use it, but there's an expectation when you're in the county that if you make that call, that there's someone on the other end to be able to answer that. And so, we received the consultant's recommendations and the commission has follows those recommendations. So, we're trying to work out the logistics with our county board of supervisors, and so that's where, that's where we're at as well. So, interesting year just across the board from potential growth or lack thereof. So, do any of you have questions? I know our department heads have been working to try to come up with other revenue sources. We had a very strong conversation on Thursday about that, and seeing where there's some sources of revenue, some sources of opportunities, or some expenditures that we may be able to take a look at to try to get us to a good maximum levy rate over the course of the next week or two, but also continuing to work from that maximum rate to something that is voted on by all the council for FY twenty-four. So, Bridget, the finance department, our department heads are working right now to get a good product for us, but also make sure that we can maintain services as much as possible throughout this, throughout this fiscal year as well. But do any of you have questions right now, timing and those things? Mr. Greider?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing is, will we be seeing, I know we're still working on CIP, or will we be seeing that soon? Do we have a timeframe on CIP?
No, could you get up and say that on the witness stand?
About three weeks ago, he said, by Friday, so.
Yeah.
Tell me which Friday.
No, but they need to know, because that's gone from, what, ten million, ten million to what this year? Six, that'll be six or under six million. So, about a forty percent reduction in CIP, so.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we can.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
And I was concerned on the CIP that, that we are going to meet our obligations for the Gates and Burns projects, because we did out, we, that is, and everyone wants a buy-in, and that was part of our buy-in with that. I'm extremely, you know when our drop dead date is on this EMA levy, when we will, when we'll find out? Because I know we have a meeting two o'clock next Thursday, and, and then an EMA meeting immediately following, correct?
Yeah, this Thursday.
This is coming up, this Thursday.
Yeah.
But, because that's a one point eight to two point three million dollar difference in, in our tax asking, is correct?
Uh.
If, if it's, if the levy doesn't go through.
Yeah, you know, I want to be clear that it, you know, it's, it's a, it's a change from our budget, but it is all the citizens.
Everyone's paying.
Right.
Right, and I, I understand that, but right now, last year, we were close to one point four million, and then projected at one point eight million, and that's, that's, we've got some hefty increases. I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're entering into contract negotiations, and you know, if, if, if we end up going to arbitration with a couple, a couple of unions, there, there's a good possibility they're going to get more than what we budget.
Right.
And, and that, that concerns me, because I, I think an arbitrator doesn't base on our ability to pay us, our ability to tax.
Right, right.
Which is, which is frightening, so.
Yeah, I think, this may be one of the years where we are going to arbitration. Just for, you know, and I haven't seen all the preliminary numbers yet, but it's a challenging year. So, we need to be fair, you know, to our bargaining groups, of course, but, yeah, we got to how you say, toe the line on some areas too. Thank you, Mr. Bozen. Were you finished?
Well, I, I had some other stuff.
No, keep going.
No, I'll, I'll let other people talk and see if I can reformulate so it doesn't sound so bad.
Good luck on that.
Yeah, it was.
I'm trying to smile.
Yeah, I appreciate you smiling too. I really do, because it's, it's, it's concerning. Let's just leave it at that.
Counsel, anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I know we were, we talked in the past about different strategies that we can use to increase our ability to take care of our rental housing inspections. What strategy are we working into our budget in order to be able to do that, whether it's just be straight-out funding or other potential revenue, uses of revenue?
Right now, I got so many different, I know we, one, we need to up the amount of inspections that we're doing. And one position that's one of the most crucial here moving forward is some type of additional rental inspection person. When you talk about just overall safety, we've been able to make sure internally, we hire Mr. Fishels as our safety inspector to work internally, but externally, the housing is in serious critical need, and so we've been trying to figure out a format to be able to hire rental, another rental inspector to help increase that amount, because I never want to look in a newspaper or somewhere and see if there's a challenge. So, we've been working hard to try to meet that demand and trying to look internally for some strategies on being able to hire another person and help us with those, with those rental inspections. So, we should have some information out for you over the course of the next two weeks or so, on how we're trying to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
On that subject, how do we offset, if, if we're charging twenty-five dollars, am I correct? For registration fee, and we have ten thousand units, is that also correct, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Give or take, depending on how many register each year. Last year was eleven.
So, you're talking about two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that in itself, we have one point five rental inspectors? Correct? Okay, so, that, that doesn't take up the whole, I mean, I understand we also have some clerical and everything else coming out of there, but when we add another rental inspector, money that's already in that, in that fund that's earmarked for these other areas, how do we make up that difference? And I, and I understand the importance of having rental inspections, because when I was the, the fire marshal, whenever we had a fire in a rental property, the first thing the insurance company's called and asked for this inspection reports, especially if we had non-working smoke detectors, you know, and we had an injury or a death. And it's, and it's a liability on this city. So, I truly believe we need to, we need to move forward, but we also need to fill that, backfill that stopgap of where that other money's being spent right now. That, that, and herein lies another, another issue. I mean, how do we make that up too?
True.
And I, I do believe that on the, on the, on the areas of increased revenue, I think it's great that we're looking outside the box and, and we're able to make some changes and, and bring in some additional revenue, but and, and, but it's such a small portion of our overall budget. I mean, it truly is. It just doesn't, it doesn't help us here. So, we've got some, some tough decisions to make, and, and it's, this is not going to be the, the okay, let me go back here. Do we know? I guess we'll wait till, till we set the, set the, the maximum levy, but, and I don't want people to panic when we set the maximum levy like they, like it has in the past. Because it's, it's, it's not, it doesn't mean that's the, the final levy.
Yeah, I tell you, I'm taking blood pressure medicine as well, so. But yeah, yeah, you're right, and I think, I think, and actually trying to explain it again. You know, some folks jump all on it though, and throw a lot of stuff in the air as far as what it is, but our goal is to work back from there, and other cities, other cities are doing the same thing as well, setting that maximum rate also. But, yeah, we're hopefully, we'll have, we'll set that date of hearing here pretty soon.
Yeah, on the sixth, we'll set the date for hearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Something that I had asked in the past was how much money approximately is coming in through taxable value off, off of properties that are coming off of the three-year tax abatement? Is that something we could get?
Yeah, no, you, first of all, no, do you have on glasses?
I think I'm writing bigger than I usually do.
Um, but can you have somebody work on a report for those coming up to three-year, please? And don't say you'll have it on Friday, but I'll, we've been on it tomorrow. I don't know how soon, because we've had probably about five or six hundred houses over the last, what, eight, nine years or so?
Some of those are multifamily dwellings, so, as opposed to the because if thirty-five houses come on board, and you figure the average tax on those thirty-five houses, and then, and then our share of that, it, it's a long ways from, from what we need to even help us to bail us out. I mean, if you're talking thirty-five houses and let's say seven to eight thousand dollars a year in property taxes, you know, we're at two hundred fifty thousand, and then we get forty-four point six or forty-five percent, am I correct, Bridget? Our, our percentage of, of the taxes that everyone pays?
Yeah, we're at, I think, forty-six percent.
I didn't hear you say.
I think it's a forty-six percent.
Forty-six percent, okay. So, now you take, take that forty-six percent, and then all of a sudden you're taking seventy-five million dollars, it doesn't really bail us out.
But it does, but it does help in some, some of the areas too, so it's, um.
I think our biggest concern is taking blighted areas and building them up.
Yeah.
Yes, to increase our, our taxable value.
Absolutely.
Well, that could be accounted for too in that document, of properties that have been improved and in dust, gotten the tax abatement for the improvement cost difference. So, if someone improved their house from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars and got the tax abatement on that hundred thousand they improved their house on, that could also be in the report.
I just went from a two-week study to about a month and a half study, but. Well, well, yeah, we just need to have an overall housing conversation as well at some point, which would sound good, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in the past, and I, and I, and I know we're, we're going into contract negotiations, but in the past, we have reached out to our bargaining units. And I'm not above doing that. There were years when the fire department that, that we took a pay freeze because it was in the best interest of the city. You know, and, and as the fire department union, we stood up and said, we, you know, we want to keep the fire stations open, we want to support, we want to, you know, we understand the position you're in, and I'm not advocating that across the board, but I think we need to, I think that wouldn't hurt us to reach out to our labor unions and, and so they understand the position that we're in. Considering most of our, our expenditures are personnel.
Yeah. Will do. Okay, I got it down. All right, counsel, anything else? All right, all right. This next portion is for.
Kelly. All right, so tonight, we're going to do a test run-through with our new agenda management software, Civic Clerk. So, there is included with, public will be able to see this too, included with the planning session agenda is a MAC agenda. All these items on this agenda have already been approved by council back in twenty twenty-two, so our pretend voting on them tonight is not going to impact how those votes came out. So, of note, what the public will see as we go through this process is we have this display screen that will show in council chambers. What will hopefully appear up on the screen is votes that are going to take place to kind of help the public be able to keep track of where we are within the agenda, and then also the outcome of the vote, so how each council member, it, it will show the total vote, not necessarily how each one votes. I will have to do a couple clicks here to get the meeting queued up. But first thing we want to do is make sure that all the council members are into the board view and are logged into the meeting, and we can do that one of two ways. Each individual council member can go in and join the meeting, which, oh, five have done now, that's exciting. Or I can go through and do a roll call and say that everybody is in. So, I'll do that real quick, just for the interest of time. Okay, so we are all in. I guess a couple things, one thing of note.
Do we roll call on that, or do you have, or I just asked, Madam Clerk, do you have the roll?
Yep, and I can read who's present or who's absent. We can do it two ways. I can read who's present, who's absent in the software, or we can go through and do it verbally.
This one's asked it.
Yeah, well, everybody's here anyway. One thing to note, when we do take resolutions, the software is more geared towards taking agenda items individually. However, we do have a workaround for taking resolutions as a group. So, what I would like to do is at least take two individually, so we can see what that looks like, and then we can take the rest as a group. Go through and reading those and queuing up the vote. So, if we're ready to get started, we can get started.
Could someone take items? Remember, you want to do the public hearing first, or you want to do?
Um, I've got.
Is that an agenda?
Oh, we got, oh, we're not.
Let me do a couple clips. I've got agenda minutes, things like that.
All right.
I mean, I'll, I'll let you know when I'm ready to go. Okay.
If you want to do the hearing first.
Um, let's approve, let's go through, start at the top with.
All right, um, would someone want to approve that agenda in the minutes and?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular session as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
So, what you should see on your screens now is the ability to vote on approving the agenda in minutes.
All right, so the motion to approve the agenda has been.
Oh, we got to hit save each time? Okay, vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, that passed.
The motion passed.
Thank gosh.
Yep, so then that's what we see up there. It does cut off, okay.
Have to scroll, it looks like that's probably what the blue line is. Six hundred.
Okay.
Oh, who's that has to scroll, Chris?
Ten seconds, do you need a wireless mouse?
Yeah, so be careful with it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll ask Civic Clerk about that too. We may have to just adjust the resolution.
All right, that leads us to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as well as one A one bills payment, zero dollars.
Can I ask a question now? If, if, so, it'd be imperative then that we pull items from the consent agenda prior to this point in the meeting.
It would be really nice if you let me know. I'm not sure how to do that. I'll figure it out, but.
No, but I'm just saying, we, we really want to do that ahead of time, so that if we're going to vote on something on the consent agenda separately. Okay, thank you.
What's that? The one you just asked about.
Okay. Need one more vote. There we go. Oh, a pet, look at that, the consent agenda passed.
On the consent agenda, pass, six hundred.
Make a motion to approve the. Public hearing.
That part hasn't changed.
Nope, motion to receive and file publication notes, public hearing for South Street and West Ninth. I'm not going to read all of it, sorry.
That motion has been made and with the second. All in favor? That item passed. And Nia White, if she voted no.
Nina voted no.
I, I just had to figure out what it was going to do.
So if we were looking at that public hearing, we'd normally see the different.
Yeah, each piece, but we don't.
Oh, now it's just one at a time?
Yeah, they don't.
Let me see how it plays on yours.
No, no, I voted it.
Yeah, it doesn't have the rest of it.
Okay.
The motion to close.
Yeah, unless you go to packet or agenda view, it doesn't have each of the.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know.
So if you click on packet, that would work?
If you click on packet or agenda, it, it looks like our old one. And it has the steps, but.
Did the voting come up for you normal then?
Yes, if you're on the packet view, it does come up.
Oh, we can just use that then. I see the agenda on the top left.
Packet or agenda.
Yeah, agenda is probably. Unless you want to see all the, the attachments, which is also.
From last year.
Of different items.
I'm in the agenda. Where do I need to be in? Packet or agenda?
The agenda is, has its printed.
Right.
Packet has the attachments.
What should you recommend Jonathan for that?
Dealer's choice.
Well, that's, that is, that's helpful.
Agenda, I mean, I, I, agenda is a little bit.
Cleaner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's more like what, whatever we used to have. I've already forgotten it. Move on.
Novus.
Yeah, that one.
So Madam Clerk, when we have, like, if somebody wanted, so public hearing, they come, they do this. We move on. What if we want to speak? Are we just, is there a way to do it on here or are we?
There is a way to, like, raise your hand, saying that you want to speak.
Okay.
Well, I think we'll need to.
Keep, that'll be done.
I think for right now, do it normal. I would like to see, um, there's a separate board view for mayor, so I'd kind of like to see. What you get to see as well. But anyway, if we're ready for the next motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
We gotta wait for that, don't we?
And if you guys want to, um, just do a voice vote, I can mark everybody as all yes as well, so I have that option.
All right, so the hearing is open. Is there someone that would like to address the city council on this item?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
The motion has been made with the, sorry? Does somebody give a second?
Second.
The motion has been made with the second.
I was ahead of you guys, sorry.
I think it'd be valuable to keep the voice votes, the voice votes, just from a rate of. Meeting.
Okay.
What? Think the voice votes that we do voice votes now, I think it'd be valuable to keep them that way.
Okay.
In the.
You mean like when we all, when it's an all in favor and not a, not a roll call?
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, cause then I can, I can click through a little bit faster.
Yeah.
Keep you guys up to speed. Okay, so this one will be resolution.
No, we're not. Well, we haven't finished this yet.
Though, hearing has been closed, um, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, et cetera, et cetera.
The motion has been made with the second.
Here's the hearing, my, is my question then, because in the past, you, you put it out for council. And when we did our practice session with that company, there was a thing that says talk or you want to speak. I don't see that.
I'll have to go back through and, I'll review the video.
You know, because it was right down in this corner, said we want to talk and it was, it would cue the mayor that we wanted to say something on this item.
Yep, yeah, I remember that.
Could that be because he's not logged in?
It could be. I'll have to play with it a little bit. Okay, is your vote queued up?
I've already voted.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, that motion.
You vote, you voted.
And he, um, he, uh. And the reason he abstained from this vote because, uh. Doesn't like going around in circles. Sick if he goes around a circle too fast on that roundabout.
There we go.
All right, make a motion to receive file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Pose, all right.
Like, make a motion to adopt a resolution or warning bid X, Y, Z.
Second.
Uh, that motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any discussion?
Oh.
I created roundabouts.
Oh, shoot.
Did you vote for me?
I did.
I kind of like that.
You really like it? Okay, I think we're on the resolution now.
We closed off the B. What should we do? All right, so that pale, uh, passed six zero. All right. So we got to take, uh, a couple of these at a time. We'll start, we'll do one and two. Would someone take that? All right, adopt a resolution approving a three-year Cedar Valley Stormwater Partnership Agreement amount of twenty-five eighty-seven. And the second one's request to City Waterloo dedicate sixty-foot sanitary sewer.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Do I need to say Madam Clerk?
No, we're okay.
But we're going to get one, we're going to vote twice, but it just comes up like that. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, it's only going to show one of the resolutions.
Okay, but we can read, we can read three of them. And then, and then if we vote no on like.
Yep, and so if you notice in the motion, it put one through two.
See that?
I'll try and get better at saying it's resolution one through two. Just to kind of help everybody see that we're doing.
So then the second will pop up then?
Second one probably will not pop up. You'll just vote once on those two resolutions.
How do you vote no for one of them?
You'll have to tell me which one you're voting no on, and then I'll just note that in, um, the minutes, and then we'll go through and fix it on the backend.
Otherwise, if we just write them individually, it would be.
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion for, to adopt a resolution approving our request by City Waterloo.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. The motion carried.
Number three now?
Yeah.
Yep. Catch up clerk.
All right, are we doing three through six or just number three?
I just did number three, sorry, just to look at it again.
Okay.
With just one.
So you want us to do three of them?
Ray would like to do just one.
I just wanted to see one, one time, and then we can do the rest. I mean, four, five, six.
Can we do a multiple one after this?
Yeah.
Cause I was just wondering what it looks like up there. Can we do multiple? So just recognize it popped up.
Who's got the second on that?
Me.
You should get like a function button for any of those three over there. For seconds.
You want us to do four, five and six?
So.
Are we good, Kelly?
Just now.
I got five.
The number two popped up for me, like on my screen. It was number two.
The number two popped up?
Yeah.
Well, number two and number three were off, are a lot like.
Oh, okay, that's true.
That's probably why.
That's true.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving dedication to sanitary sewer, motel motel and hazardous materials training. I'm doing four, five and six.
All right, uh, for four, five and six, we have a motion and a second question, counsel. All right, uh, Madam Clerk. You know, it's interesting, what if somebody wants to wait to see what another person votes? That's completely gone right now.
I'm just glad we're doing away with that.
Okay, so that's what the display looks like.
Just one. And that's three.
Why is it showing three?
Cause it should be showing four, five and six, right?
Yeah, it should show six, okay.
The one I'm seeing says four through six on mine.
Reasonable training.
Mine just gives the resol, the last resolution.
Yeah, mine says, yeah.
But it does say four through six though. Right?
Mine doesn't say.
You've got colors on yours.
Yeah, I have color. Was your second?
No, mine just was one. Mine just had the very first one.
So let me ask you this, then, then how, if we don't have that speak button, if, if we're going to vote differently on it. On, we got three resolutions and I'm going to vote yes on, on four and six and no on five. How do we get around this table to do that?
I would say when it comes time, when the vote pops up on your screen, it'd be a good time to maybe announce that you're going to vote no on. X item and yes on the other two, so I can note that in the minutes. It will not address it on the screen. It's, let's say you just vote yes or no, it's going to show.
Six oh, no, yes.
Yep, it's just going to show the outcome of the vote on the one item.
Would that, is that going to confuse people? I mean, when we do these multiple votes that are at home?
Potentially.
Okay.
But I don't know, I, I gotta talk to cable access. I don't know if that screen is going to show on our live feed or what we're thinking.
And I guess if we, if we work out that portion of it where, where we have that icon where that we click on that we want to speak. When those resolutions come up, it would cue Mr. Mayor that we. May, may have not be all unanimous on all three of those.
I see it does say no proof resolutions four through six up there.
I wonder if, I'm limited to a hundred characters, so I could probably type in there, Mr. Bosin.
Let me go back to the agenda view once. Not here, here?
Yeah. And mine was, mine was like colorful and.
Or you clicked on the packet or on the agenda?
Agenda.
Where are you clicked on, Dave?
I was, I was looking at the, I was on either one of those. I was looking at the.
Okay, check that out. So I can type that in the motion as some sort of note.
Okay.
It's a little more clear.
Okay. That would be good for the people at home.
Yes.
So they're not just looking at the screen and seeing that it carried, you know.
All right. Ready for the ordinance?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to see if I consider pass first time an ordinance, meaning the Waterloo City of Ordinances, section three, blah, blah, blah.
Second.
Wish we could just say blah, blah.
That motion, uh, has been made with the second. Counsel. Any discussion on the code of ordinances for Waterloo and general penalties?
But mine never said this before.
All right, uh, it's your time to vote.
Look at this right here. Excuse me. I'm just pretending like it's next Monday.
Code of ordinances and a failure to pay to chapter three, general penalties. Are there any questions? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motions to suspend rules. Madam Clerk, nope, uh, roll call vote, counsel. No, what would be there?
Vote, counsel?
Vote, counsel?
Now.
Leave it on the screen all day.
I always say, please vote now, counsel. And then I can look at the screen and like, John, today, please. Oh, John's voting no again.
I did not vote no. I didn't vote at all.
That one failed.
Abs. Work out when he gets.
Then I don't get to read the last part, so.
Okay.
We'll take up this issue again. We haven't had one person that's ever called and inquire about this, but we'll take up this issue again to give that. Non-person a chance to come in and questions. All right.
Who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
The fake one or the real?
The fake one. Well, let's do them both at the same time.
Motion to adjourn fake council meeting.
And adjourn from the.
And now make a motion to adjourn from her.
So do, are there, so I'm pretty sure you all want to do that again, run through this again. Are you good for right now?
We're okay.
Will we have another practice session?
If you want to get together for one, we could probably try and do, squeeze one in yet this week before.
Well, can they, they don't have to be here though, do they? Oh, the six, we're going live?
We could do it on Zoom.
We could set up a Zoom, make another fake agenda, and I can post it.
For agenda.
I'll send out an email.
You know, if you have your iPad and if it does change with the speaker, I mean, if you can check into that, Kelly, to see if like he is.
Mayor, before we actually adjourn, could I say one thing?
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, for those that may not have been aware, I did postpone our award meeting this past Saturday due to the weather. I didn't want anyone driving in the snow. Uh, the last, this past Saturday, so it will be this coming Saturday at noon in this room. Uh, I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Now hosting at, at your house? All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.
Aye.
All right.